Okay, greetings from sunny San Diego and welcome to the May 27th, 2021 meeting of the Haverford Township Planning Commission. Kelly, could you call role, please?
Mr. Capuzzi.
Present.
Mr. Reardon.
Here.
Ms. Dobbs.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Ferramundo, Mr. Garrett, and Ms. Phillips.
Here.
Okay, I'll ask everyone join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. First item on our agenda this evening is a, I guess what we call a lot line modification plan for 155 Cooper Town Road. And I see Matt Kelly and Sean, is it live C?
Liv C, yes, sir.
Liv C. And Mr. And Mrs. Frill?
Yes, they are both here as well.
Okay. All right. Matt, you're with Naval.
That is correct. I am the principal over there and the head of the survey department.
Okay, why don't you fill us in what's going on here?
All right, well, based on what we did, we were approached to do, Sean approached us about potentially looking into a potential issue with the right of way on 155 Cooper Town Road. We did some research and eventually found a subdivision plan done by A.G. McComby in 1978, which calls out along Cooper Town Road, it calls out, I guess, to the, I guess you can call it the western side of Cooper Town Road, a sixteen and a half foot from center line. But the eastern side of Cooper Town, they showed a twenty-five foot right of way from the center line of, or the title line of the road. After doing some extensive research, talking to zoning, and unfortunately, these are not the easiest things to dig up the information on, we found, in my opinion, and I think it's been substantiated, that the, the true right of way for both Cooper Town Road as well as College Avenue should be thirty-three feet from the center line of the road. So essentially sixteen and a half feet from, from the title line or center line of the road. Therefore, it caused more or less a gore, an eight and a half foot discrepancy between the previous twenty-five feet, as Mr. McComby showed on the 1978 survey, and what we show now, which is the sixteen and a half feet from the center line of both College and Cooper Town Road. And I might add to that as well, I take the opportunity to just say, in addition to the plan that we submitted with the application here, we also submitted a letter from PennDOT, and the letter is very clear and unequivocal in that PennDOT's findings were that the roadway is thirty-three feet wide for each road and not fifty feet, and they do not express any interest in dedicating the roadway beyond that thirty-three feet. I can, I can display, if you would like, as an exhibit, that letter with a screen share, if that would be something that you'd be interested in, otherwise, it was included with the application.
We did receive a copy of that letter, Sean, and was in our packet, so.
Very good.
I think we've all had a chance to take a look at that letter.
Okay.
Just to shed a little light on the subject, I imagine that the reason the right of way was shown as twenty-five feet was because at the time, and it's still in existence, the township has an ordinance that requires a minimum of a fifty-foot right of way for all existing new streets. So I imagine the intent was that that additional right of way at some point in time would be dedicated either to the township or to PennDOT. But apparently that never happened, so that's, that's what happened there. We, we do have a review letter from the township engineer, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and I assume that the applicant would agree to making those changes that are listed in the township engineer's review letter?
That is confirmed, yes.
Okay. That being the case, I'll open it up to questions from the planning commission. Julia, would you like to go first?
Sure, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, Maggie?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I just want to confirm, so we're saying that the, the street right of way is thirty-three feet per, like, standard PennDOT rights of way? And then the township's right of way was fifty feet, but you're saying that, that PennDOT said that they didn't want to accept dedication of the ultimate right of way?
Correct, and that expressed no interest in expanding the ultimate right of way beyond their thirty-three feet.
Yeah, that sounds pretty standard for what PennDOT does with dedications. So then it's just a movement, so the twenty-five feet was based off of the township's standards in the Saldo from before?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, yep, no, no questions.
Okay.
No other questions, thank you.
Thank you. David?
No questions.
Mr. Reardon?
Well, I live on the block. And for whatever it's worth, there are portions of the road that have fifty-foot right aways and portions that have thirty-three-foot right aways, depending on the dates that they were put in place and whether or not the appropriate paperwork was filed as it should have been at the beginning. So I understand that what happened during the time of Charlie Helm and his group is that they didn't follow through. And so the result is that we do not have a total fifty-foot right of way, but it jumps back and forth all down the street from the very beginning of the street up to College Avenue, it's all over the place. So some of the properties have gateways and everything that follow the twenty-five feet, and some of them follow the sixteen and foot, sixteen and a half foot, or whatever it is, numbers. And I understand how that all works, and I think that, that this is a correct move. I also believe at the corner, there's a problem, but only in the sense of the way things are drawn out, but I'll leave that to Angelo to bring forward. And otherwise, yes, I believe that on a technicality, this is what has happened.
Okay, thanks Chuck. Chuck Faulkner, do you, would you like to say anything?
I don't think so, Angelo, I think everybody else has covered stuff at this point, unless there's questions for me.
Okay.
Angelo, we do have a public participation member this evening. I don't know if she has any questions, but you may.
That would be Susan?
Yes.
Okay, all right, let's finish with our questions, and then we'll ask Susan for her comments. Matt and Sean, I have a couple of questions. In doing your research, did you, were able to discover or determine whether or not PennDOT had any official right of way plans for this section of Cooper Town and College?
I can answer that. I think actually the letter really answers that question, because we did, I did speak with representatives from PennDOT personally, and we corresponded with them, and that letter was ultimately one of the results. And it is clear from, actually, it says verbatim in the letter, that, I think, maybe I can quote from it.
Sean, I'm not questioning the letter of the thirty-three feet, I'm just asking a question, did you guys come across any legal right of way plans that PennDOT had for this section of the?
No, not, no.
Okay, all right. Matt, how did you establish the position and alignment of the legal right of way line?
With this particular situation, we used, based on the existing monumentation and meets and bounds, the beaten path method on both Cooper Town and College Avenue. Basically, shooting the edge of pavement on each road, splitting, splitting the road, best, best fit center line of each road, and then established it that way.
So it's just a coincidence that the new right of way lines are parallel to the existing plant, right? The right of way line shown on McComme Plant? Or that their survey was accurate?
Their survey was accurate, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything, and Sean and Matt, one of you two might want to try answering this, is there anything in the enabling a legislation that speaks to requirement or a specification for a radius return at the corner of intersecting highways?
If there is, I did not uncover it while we were doing the survey.
So you're, you're proposing, you're the twenty-five-foot radius return at the corner is something that you're proposing?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Okay, so technically, it may or may not be the legal right of way line.
Correct, correct.
So it would seem to me that there's a, we're creating another no man's land possibly between that radius return and the two intersecting tangent lines on the thirty-three-foot right of way.
Exactly.
So does it make sense that there should be a deed of dedication prepared and recorded for that segment of area? And the reason I say that is because there happens to be a, a storm drain at that corner, which shows on the McComme Plant, it doesn't show on the Naval Plant, but there's a existing storm inlet at that corner that probably falls within that little area. And I doubt that the Freels want to be involved in maintaining that inlet.
Would make sense, yeah, I agree, that would be a good course of action.
Okay. And then my final question is, was this plan submitted to PennDOT for review and approval?
It was not submitted to PennDOT.
Okay.
No.
All right. And I also note that by making this adjustment, you're eliminating the existing non-conformity on the property in regards to impervious coverage.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anybody else want to say anything or have any questions? Okay, we have someone in the audience who'd like to speak up. Kelly, do you know who that is? All I see is Susan's iPad, I don't know who that is.
Right, I don't know that she necessarily had any input or public comment, but did request to be included and have a link to the meeting, there we go.
No question.
Can you identify?
No question, I'm just curious, as I am.
Susan, could you identify yourself?
Yes, Susan Tesaurus. I live at 417 College, and my property is one of the original four in that property that was mentioned in all the documentation, so I just wanted to know what was going on, that's all.
Well, there's eight and a half feet up for grabs, Susan, if you're interested.
They take it off my taxes? What does that mean, what does that really mean to the surrounding properties? Is that going to, what's that going to do?
It would only affect the four, four lots that were created by that subdivision that was done in 1978.
And in what way?
Well, each of them would be entitled to an additional eight and a half feet of property along the frontage of their lot. But you have to go through a legal process in order to claim it. And then you'd be, you'd be responsible for maintaining, probably already maintain it anyhow.
And probably have to pay taxes.
I'm okay.
You're okay?
No, I'm good.
Just wanted to make.
I'm good, I just wanted to know, you know, you get a letter from an attorney that there's a meeting, you feel like you should sit in, so I'm sitting in, and now I'm going to mute myself. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, I'll make a motion that we recommend the lot line adjustment plan for 155 Cooper Town Road be approved by the Board of Commissioners, subject to the conditions outlined in the Panoni Review Letter of May 27th, is it? Shock your letter on 27th?
Yes, it's today, yeah.
27th, 2021. That, before the plan is recorded, the plan be submitted to PennDOT for review and approval. Reason being is we're going to be setting monuments out there that are basically establishing PennDOT right of way, I just want to make sure that PennDOT agrees with the location where those monuments are going to be set. And then the third condition would be that, if required, a deed of dedication be prepared and recorded, donating that piece of ground created at the corner of College Avenue and Cooper Town Road bounded by the legal thirty-three-foot right of way lines of those two roads and the proposed twenty-five-foot radius return. Let that be performed and completed prior to recording of the plan.
You have a second?
We have a motion and a second, does anyone have any comments or questions? Hearing none, Kelly, could you take role, please?
Mr. Capuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Reardon.
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, Matt, Sean, and Mrs. Frill, thank you for attending and good luck with your project.
Thank you very much, take care, guys.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, moving right along, we have another application for grant money that's being made by Haverford Township for the improvements of stream bank along Cobb's Creek between Lakeside Avenue and Manoa Road, more or less, and Chuck Faulkner is going to give us those details.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Capuzzi, so this grant is from DCED, Department of Community and Economic Development in the state, it's a water restoration and protection program, so what the township's looking to do is use it for stream bank restoration along Cobb's Creek, as Angelo mentioned, generally between Beechwood and Manoa. That stretch of Cobb's Creek is, you know, as it exits the township, has some fairly high velocities through there, and there is some stream bank erosion in there. Now, the reason we want to do this is a couple, a couple things here. Obviously, A, we want to take care of the erosion there, but B, and I'm not sure how many of you know about this particular thing, there is what's called a PRP, a Pollution Reduction Plan. That's part of the MS4 program that's administered by the state of Pennsylvania. Not going to go into details, but briefly, it's an unfunded mandate by the state, so it's, you know, they're not giving any money to do this work, but they're requiring a reduction in pollutants by a minimum of ten percent. There's a permit associated with it, and there's a timeframe associated with it. The timeframe is five years, and the permit was issued in 2019. So the township's required to meet that, that mandate there. And when we say reduction in pollutants, pollutants can be a number of things, they can be chemical, they can be biological, or they can be, in this case, what the major pollutant is in the township is sediment. So if you look along the stream banks of Cobb's and particularly Darby Creek, there's a lot of areas that are eroded, that causes a lot of sediment to be deposited in the streams and causes water quality issues and such. So that's, that's what the township is, is required to do by 2025. And not only this township, but all surrounding townships are required to do that, too. Now, it's not cheap to get sediment reduction, the biggest bang for the buck is to do stream bank restoration. There are other projects that can be done, retrofit basins, you could do rain gardens and such, but there is, there is a, there's a formula for getting credit towards that ten percent reduction, and, you know, economically, the biggest bang for the buck is stream bank restoration, and it makes sense. If you go down and look at some of those areas, they're well-eroded, and you can see you get heavy storm flows through there, it's just going to erode them more. So what this project does is go in, take a certain section of the stream bank that the money allows, and restore it. Now, that doesn't mean going in and throwing rock or riprap or any hard armoring against the banks, it all has to be natural, has to be plant, has to be grasses, it can be some different types of stream bank modifications, like J hooks and stuff like that, that sort of direct the water in different ways to keep it away from, from the stream bank, but it's, it's, it's got to be somewhat natural. And DP will look at that, they'll, after it's done, they'll, they'll evaluate it, and they'll sign off on it if it meets all that criteria. So basically, what the township's looking to do is, is sort of take, meet the requirements of that PRPs using somebody else's money, using grant money. So there is a match to this, that matches only fifteen percent. And the other thing is, the township did, was awarded a grant from DCNR to do some, in that area, to do some invasive species and some trees and everything like that. So we're trying to bunch these two grants together and in the, basically one, and try to accomplish more than one thing down through there. So that's the brunt of it, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, let's go around the horn, Julia, you can start again.
All right. Um, I guess I just, I just sort of have an overall question as to how well something like that would hold up during a storm. I know last year, when that category one hurricane, I think it was, came through, there was just so much debris that went through the creek there, when it took out the bridge at the Caracan and everything, and I'm just, again, wondering, like, is there like a certain amount of years that this work will hold up for? Or do you maintain it over time and after major storm events, or how does that work?
Well, first of all, you're not the only one who has that question, everybody has that question. Look, you, you get, you get a tropical storm, I see, he sees down through there, you get a hundred-year storm, you even get a fifty-year storm, some of this stuff is not going to hold up, there's no question about it. And hence, if you look at that creek down along Caracan, there's a lot of boulders in there, there's a lot of rock, there's a lot of stuff that was done before. But in order to meet the requirements of that PRP, they will not accept that. They just won't accept it, and to answer your question, yes, it's going to have to be maintained.
Okay.
The most effective is some type of armoring as far as holding up to a hundred-year storm.
Absolutely.
But we don't have the luxury of doing that in this case because of what the law says.
That's right.
Anything else, Julia?
No, that was it for me.
Thank you. Maggie?
Hello, yes, my township won't be competing for this grant as well, we're fine for one, too.
As will many.
I hope we both get them. No, I don't have any, any major questions. I'd be interested in seeing the, do we have the, the plans for the stabilization project itself? Did we get those?
There are, we have not done plans as, as of this point, this is simply applying for the grant monies to do the work. So we haven't really got to that point yet.
Yeah, because I know that what the stabilized landscape fabric, is that, cannot be used for the project? Will that count towards the PRP requirements?
Yes, I believe it should, it's, it's the, like, the hard armoring that, that DP doesn't want. It's the rock, it's, it's, you know, anything cementitious that's in there, or, or that's impervious, that goes back there, they want natural, natural vegetation. Which.
So problematical, it's just unbelievable.
Especially when you have slopes on the order of two to one and one to one on some of those banks.
Amen.
I mean, eventually, it would just erode around any sort of boulders that get put there. So how much, how many linear feet of the stream are we talking about?
Well, let's put it this way, if, if we had to, well, we have to meet the PRP, there's miles of stream that have to be done to meet that, miles. You know, it could be on the order of somewhere around four million dollars to do all that.
How much, how much, I'm sorry, wait.
So how many linear feet for this particular project?
This linear feet is probably at most a couple hundred feet.
Okay.
Because, you know, if you think about it, there's a lot other than just doing the, the actual restoration work, you got to get there, you know, which is, in some cases, not easy, you got to be able to divert the stream around the areas you're working with, you got to, you got to get in there, and may have to do some grading and some filling, cutting in, in certain areas, and then, and then install what you're doing and maintain it until it establishes, so it's, it's, it's not cheap.
So then the engineering, will that be part of the township match, or will that be pulled from the grant funds to do the engineering work if the grant is awarded?
I'm not sure what, what the township has done in the past is, is both ways. Sometimes they've used, like, engineering or administrative cost as part of the match, other times, they, they preferred to put it all towards the work and pay the, pay the other cost outright.
It generally depends on if the grant allows those things.
Right.
Contribution.
Yeah, usually, I mean, I feel like engineering usually has to come from the township match. And then what, so for the TMDL, I'm assuming that this is going to be reducing, you said, so we're looking at primarily sediment.
Yes.
Reduction is the, is the primary purpose of this. Is there any other pollutant reduction goals that this project will achieve for things like phosphorus or nitrogen?
Look, I'm, I'm, I'll tell you right now, I'm not an expert on that, but I believe there are limited reductions on some of those other categories in there. But by far, obviously, the, the biggest reduction would be sediment.
Do we have an estimated percentage of the reduction in sedimentation towards our PRP goals? In terms of, like, do we have a volume, a cubic, the metric volume of how much sediment will be removed as part of this project, and what percentage of that is our, what percentage of that is it from our total sediment reduction goals?
Back when we did the PRP plan, and I think Kelly actually put this in your packet, is a pollutant loading table for this area, and what, what happened when the PRP was done, we went in and identified areas in all the creeks in the township that we could do some type of restoration and reduce the pollutant load, and those were all calculated out as to the reduction, so all that information is actually in the PRP plan. So basically, what we're doing is we're taking a section of this PRP plan now and, and saying, this is the area we want to start with. And if you look at that, there is a pollutant load reduction right there, like, down and through this area, it's one hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and one pounds per year. So the whole township, the whole area is where we, we thought we could do stream bank restoration, we actually calculated that out, and it's in there.
And is this?
Good.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, and that information is, is available, too, if you, if you want to look at.
Yeah, I will take a look, I haven't read through the whole PRP to see that, is this then the, where are we in terms of tackling the project identified in the PRP towards achieving our reduction goals? Is this one of the first ones that we're doing?
It would be one of the first ones, there's been some minimal work done here and there, but nothing, nothing substantial, might have been, you know, a couple hundred, or a couple feet, or a couple feet, I'm sorry, might have been ten to fifteen feet or twenty feet here and there, that might have been associated with some other work, but nothing substantial, so this would be one of the first.
Wasn't there something done at, along the Cobb's Creek area, along Marion Golf Club, when they were, when we were putting in all the stuff before the open? I thought they went through and did an entire area along there that was rather significant in order to be able to handle the new buildings that they put in for, to get ready for all of the interns and all the other people, maybe I'm mistaken, but that was back a while, if you remember, Chuck.
Yeah, I remember they did, what was that, the maintenance facility down through?
Yeah, the maintenance facility and all of the work that they did to. Yeah, the maintenance facility and all of the work that they did to the, to Cobb's Creek through their property was majorly significant. And it, what it did also was it captured some of the stuff coming from even Haverford College, Maggie, which was amazing because the pond at Haverford College drains into that system.
Yeah, I know they did some on, some on their property. They did do some restoration in the stream banks. They put in an underground cistern, basically, in through there and stuff like that. I don't know that any of that was, well, let's put it that way. We can't take credit for that because it's not, it's not on township property.
Yeah, I know the college did, it must have been 2019 that they were doing the restoration of the lake
Yes.
on the campus.
In Lower Marine, isn't it? Yes. That made sense. Yeah.
All right. And then my last question is, if we are awarded the grant, what is the construction timeline for the restoration project?
I'd imagine it would be within a year. I mean, usually, most grants, as you probably know, have timeframes on them. You know, it's usually around three years or so. So I'd imagine we'd, we'd have to get this designed and have to bid within probably a year to a year and a half at most. So enable another year or so to do the construction.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
David, any questions?
Yeah, is there a completion date for the total plan, the total PRP?
The total PRP, the permit was issued in 2019, and it's a five-year permit, so 2024, 24, 25, somewhere around there. Now, realistically, I don't think anybody's going to meet their timeframe.
That's just, is that just for this particular stretch or the miles that you were talking about?
When I, when I say realistically, anyone, the other, how many municipalities and county are in the same boat? You know, this, this work is not, not cheap. It's unfunded. So nobody's giving you any money. Everyone's after the same amount of grants. And, and it's, you know, it's intensive.
And, and this grant is, I think we read 300,000?
Yeah, I believe you're right, David. Yeah.
And I said the 15% match, so that would be, if math is right, 45,000.
Yeah, the match is a little funky. It's, it's not a straight 15%. I forget how they, they calculate it, but it's not a straight 15%, but it's, it's approximately that.
Is the riparian land owned by the township or the county, or is
That is
How do you deal with access and changing the?
That is actually township property all the way through there. And part of the reason we did choose this area is because there is a township park next to it. So that enables access a little, you know, much easier, obviously. You can go, you're not going through a private land or working off the road or something like that. So that was part of the reasoning behind this, this location.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chuck, ready?
I've, I've interrupted all night long, so I, I think I've asked most of my questions or at least responded to them. This is something that we obviously, in my opinion, need to jump on and do as much as we can. And unfortunately, it's going to be expensive.
Okay. Anything else, Chuck?
No, thank you, Sheriff. Thank you.
That 10% goal is a township-wide goal, correct?
10% goal is a mandated goal.
Right, but that's, that's for the entire township.
Township, I'm sorry, yes.
How you, how do you determine how much load you actually reduce once you complete a project? It is like you do 100 feet of stream and you get a reduction of so many pounds per year, or do you actually go in and do some type of measurement?
Because whatever is happening upstream.
I'm sorry?
What if, what if the problem is worse upstream in that area that you've done is fine, but it doesn't make any difference because it's still blowing through there?
Well, you, you have stream bank erosion everywhere, or not everywhere, but in, in many areas of, of the, of the both Darby and Cobb's, okay? You can't tackle everything at once. So you're only going to be able to do, you know, bits and pieces and bite off small chunks at a time. So I, I don't know that the upstream areas obviously are contributing, but if, if you're doing a certain area, and like I mentioned, Angelo, before, there, what, there is a calculation to determine that, what the theoretical reduction in load is.
Okay, that's my question. It's a theoretical number. It's nothing you go out and take soil, I mean, water samples of or something like that.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
It's some formula that someone created that said, if you, if you fix 200 feet of stream bank, you're going to reduce your, your erosion by so many pounds per year.
Right.
Okay, all right. There used to be, Kelly's Pond used to be down in that section. Now, you know, you know Kelly's Pond, Chuck?
I've heard of it before from several people.
That was the local ice skating rink for all us young kids back then. It's not there any longer. Okay, any other questions with anybody? All right, I will make a motion that we confirm with the Board Commissioners that this project is consistent with the guidelines of the Township's Comprehensive Plan, and we support the Township application for funding of the project.
Got a second?
We have a motion and second. Any questions, comments?
I just want to comment, it's consistent with the plan.
Correct.
In letter and spirit.
Okay. Kelly, take role, please.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And looks like the last item in our
Just very quickly, before we move on, since you are in sunny San Diego, and this letter apparently does need to be attached to the grant, which is due tomorrow, what does anyone on the board mind if I sign in the board's name?
Okay with me.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
We have minutes from the April 22nd meeting. They came out yesterday or today? I don't know. Anyhow, yesterday. Have you folks had a chance to review those?
You mean the minutes from the 13th?
I think we did those, no, the 20 second, wasn't it 22nd when we met last?
No, we met two weeks ago. May 13th?
May 13th.
May 13th, I'm sorry. I got the wrong date. All right, these are minutes from May 13. Has everybody had a chance to review them? And does anybody have any comments or corrections they'd like to make? Okay. So I'm assuming by the silence that everybody thinks the minutes are okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from our meeting on May 13.
Second.
Kelly, roll, please.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Shannon, I missed you. I was, I had to skip all those other ones in between.
Okay, Kelly, we have anything coming up in the first week of June, do you know?
In the first week of June, I, I don't believe so. I do know that the library will be coming before us probably reasonably soon. They do need variances. And they are, they will be going to the zoning hearing board first, which is not something that we usually do, but I do want to get this is at least one of those meetings before the zoning hearing board, before it comes to planning commission for discussion like we usually do.
Okay.
Because this will be, as far as I'm aware, the public's first
All right.
viewing of that plan.
If, if at all possible, I'd like to put off any really important business until we meet in person?
I, I agree. Oh, well, that would be, and what, what do we have in, I'm sorry.
24th, right?
So, so right, so I don't have anything that was submitted today. I can't imagine that I would have anything that would be ready two weeks from now. So I just had to check the date. Things have been getting away from me. So the 24th would be our next date, and so far, not bad.
May I ask a question about July and August? Are we going to have generally one meeting each time in those two months, or are we planning on just rolling along as best we can?
Well, the meeting dates that were, that the board approved back in January were for one meeting each. If we do need to have a special meeting, we can certainly take care of that.
That's, I just wanted to confirm that. Thanks.
Okay, and then I believe the township is going to be coming out with some type of conditions in regards to our meeting in person, whether we have to social distance or wear face masks or whatever, but we'll be getting guidance from the township manager before we meet in person, correct?
Absolutely, yes. I'm not certain what that guidance will be, whether there will be masks required or social distancing or occupancy limitations. But we're, you know, we're waiting on getting those things together for a plan to meet in person.
All right, great. Okay, anybody else have anything they'd like to bring up? Okay.
Hope everyone has a good holiday weekend.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You too, Maggie.
I'd like to make a motion. We adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn. Does somebody want to second that?
Second?
David seconds it. All on paper. Nobody opposed. Okay, thanks, guys.
Go Sixers.
Oh, yeah.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.